Ceremoniously, I use the big stick tonight. We'll call this meeting to order. I love it. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. If you would and you have any device on you that might ring ping, sing us a song or something else, please turn it off so that we can give you our full attention and you can give us yours. So with that, we will stand for a pledge of allegiance. And Ronnie, would you do our invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for another beautiful day you've given us. Pray that you be with us tonight. Give us the wisdom and conduct the town's business. We give you the praise and glory for it all in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. So for those of you that wonder about the big gavel, it's because the town has had an incredibly big couple of weeks. And we've done some very heavy lifting. I'm just so grateful for the work of staff and council as we announced the purchase of the Hardee's and have opened up additional parking spaces to the community now. And once the building is razed, it will host as many as 70 additional parking spaces for those that wish to visit our wonderful downtown. And please do so. Some great restaurants, some great businesses. It's a fun place to be. So I'm just so pleased with the hard work that everyone has given to make that possible. And then one week after that, this past week, we announced the purchase. We're under contract to buy the Springs Executive Office that sits on White Street and the building adjacent that now is leased by Pike. Those buildings are historic in nature to our community. They carry with them tremendous emotional value. But on the other side, some of the architects that have looked at the buildings for us, I've said they're built to last a very long time. Incredible construction. We are going to move our town hall and our police department to the executive office. We will rename it at that time. And this building and the town hall building up on Tom Hall Street will be sold. So in looking at the facility study that we covered late last year into the first of this year, we were able to look at options where we needed to expand in those areas. I would be very remiss not to say it is also due in part, a large part, to Ray Felder's efforts to secure us a $25 million grant from the state to allow us to build an operations center. So with that, it freed us up to be able to do more work for the town of Fort Mill. So my hat's off in gratitude to Ray Felder for the love that she's given our community and the work that she put into getting us that money to build that operations center. It is also a big day because we did the groundbreaking today at two o'clock up at exit 85. For those of you that are unfamiliar, 85 is the interchange between I-77 and Highway 160. Years ago, when Kingsley was built, and when I say years ago, at the announcement today, it ranged from five to 10 years. When Kingsley was conceived and built, there was a promise made. We had Governor Haley at the time, and she promised that we would redo that exit to relieve some of the backup, which is very dangerous on I-77. So we've waited and we've waited, and unfortunately, a lot has happened in those years to cause the cost to increase. During COVID, the cost of that exchange more than doubled. So we're looking at 160-plus million dollars to do that interchange and relieve that safety and the congestion that we all have to deal with on 160. So the groundbreaking occurred today. This is huge for the town of Fort Mill and its citizens. I want to thank Senator Michael Johnson and County Councilman Christie Cox, along with everyone that sits on our fats, because that money that comes in has to be distributed among all the people in Rock Hill, Fort Mill, and New York County. So everybody's after what their needs are. Everyone had to work together. So I'm very grateful that everyone understood that the need here in Fort Mill has been long lasting and a tremendous safety issue that hopefully will be corrected. How does that affect you? For the next four years, I feel certain you're going to curse many, many times in your car if you're trying to go through that intersection. The Department of Transportation has made every promise to try to work on the side so that they're not interrupting the flow of traffic. But it's impossible to do that level of work without some interruption. So I'm asking early, okay? Please have the patience that is needed for us to get through this project so that everyone will benefit and that the I-77 exchange will become safer than it is today. So with that, we will now proceed. Thank you for your patience as I covered those. Council members, you have copies of our March 4th, February 26th, February 19th, February 12th, and January 24th meetings. Yes, we've been meeting a lot. You have copies of those minute meeting minutes. Are there any changes, deletions, additions?
Mayor, there are several edits on all of the, basically the same thing on March. It should be January, the 24th, the 19th, the 26th, and March the 4th. We've got the going into executive session twice. So just, the second one says, when it also go into executive session. So it's not to come out. So I think it's the same thing. It's just an easy typo that needs to be corrected. Just to make sure the record's correct.
We've overwhelmed the system.
Oh, I get it.
So I get it.
To make sure it's correct.
Thank you, Virginia. Any other changes, deletions, corrections, additions, comments? Hearing none.
Make a motion except the minutes is read with the corrections.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
And I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you. Public comment. Pursuant to section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council, note I said citizen of the town, may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers, which actually it's at the podium as you come into council chambers. Before the start of our meeting, citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Do we have? Thank you. It's hot in here. Thank you. All right. Gretchen Benner, is that correct? Would you join us at the podium and state your address?
Hello, my name's Gretchen Benner.
Gretchen, please state your address. Please, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Go ahead.
1705 Brittany Lane in Fort Mill.
You have a Fort Mill address, but you're not in the town of Fort Mill. Are you 29708?
Yes.
You're not in the town of Fort Mill. But we will allow you to speak. But it's supposed to be if you live inside the town of Fort Mill.
This is in regards to town of Fort Mill. And I had spoken at August meeting, so thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight.
I'm aware that you spoke at the August meeting and we, by courtesy, allowed you to do so then. So please proceed within the three minutes. We are doing that as a courtesy, okay?
Oh, certainly. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Savage and council members. I'm returning as a parent volunteer from the August meeting hearing your master trail plan. And as a mother of three future Fort Mill High School students, this is in regards to the feasibility walk study that occurred on February 9th. There were over 20 individuals from many sectors, Fort Mill School District, South Carolina Department of Transportation, DHEC, and thank you to the Fort Mill planners for their participation and support, as well as the organizers Bike Ped Coalition of York County and South Carolina DHEC. A digital copy was emailed to you this afternoon, but I know it's been a full day, as mayor stated. And so of the approximately 2,000 students at Fort Mill High School, roughly 1,100 live within one mile of the school. From that feasibility study last month, the recommendations for short-term and long-term planning and consideration include continued collaboration between the town of Fort Mill, Fort Mill School District, SC DOT, and RFATs to continue to seek an accessible way for people to walk or roll around the area. We can hope that bike lanes or multi-use path will be considered along Harris Road, Mun Road, tying into the bike route on Highway 21 in Sutton. Additionally, there's a lack of signage on Harris. There's no speedway limits for the school zone. There's no crosswalk for the high school on that back entrance. And so we're just continuing to raise the impact that even this morning, there was a multi-vehicle accident at the corner of Sam Smith and Harris. We have a lot of young drivers, so this isn't going to go away with yellow jackets in our community pocket. So we're relying on this town, Fort Mill School District, SC DOT, New York County to collaborate, move forward. I think the citizens have done their efforts to try to bring the data to you all, and we appreciate your service and consideration on how to improve safety, because right now there's no such sidewalks. So it truly would connect to Harris Street Park, Walter Elijah Park, Mun Road, to get to Kingsley safely. Thanks for your time.
Gretchen, and to all those that are listening, this is something that has required a lot of special attention from parents and folks that are very interested in the pedestrian safety issues that exist within our community and without. The RFATs group, the Rock Hill Fort Mill Transportation Group, is made up of representatives from the county, from Fort Mill. Ben and I sit on that. I am the incoming vice chair. And we do a lot of work in regards to what they call multiple modality, meaning bike lanes, walking lanes, sidewalks. I also recently did an interview with Catawba Ridge Student Publication about sidewalks, because their track team would like to have more sidewalks that they could run on in town. The issue with sidewalks is that, you know, we do set aside money annually as a council and as a staff to add to sidewalks within the community. It is unfortunate that there aren't sidewalks between Fort Mill High and the neighborhoods that you speak. It is a part of what we're addressing in RFATs, and I hope that you'll come to that at the end of this month and report on. Liz probably will do that. But it is important. But I also think it's important to note to our community that we have many areas in Fort Mill that don't have sidewalks. We have people that have lived here generationally in Whiteville Park. They don't have sidewalks. So it is a complex issue. It is not a simple one plus one. Because we have elderly people that walk in Whiteville Park for their health, and they deserve to have a safe place to do that as well. So I just want you to understand, we have a heart for it, and we're going to participate and be good partners in what we need to do. But as far as just designating funding inside the town, you know, we have a lot to take into account. I'd love to see sidewalks along Dobie's Bridge Road, where I see people every day in a hazardous place. So just know that. It's not that, it's not that we're in a position to fix it, but it's also not where we could do anything automatically. So I hope my council agrees and understands with these comments, but I just wanted you to know, we do hear you. We do hear you.
I'd like to follow up on that. So the sidewalks, they go nowhere. So back when a lot of these older neighborhoods were built, there was no requirement for sidewalks.
Right.
So you can't retrofit something, it's not. My neighborhood doesn't have them, never will. But new zoning requirements for developments did, does require that. That's why you see new neighborhoods. But the problem is, we've got a sidewalk here, and then we've got the county or something that's no right of way, and we have a sidewalk there. So it's, it's one of the top topics of discussion.
True.
We all would love to do it. Sidewalks are very complex and very expensive. So I would like to employ civic groups to help if they would like to help some raise funds or something like that. But it is not, it's more expensive, I think, for sidewalks than it is for regular roads. And until you get into the weeds, and then you've got to get the right of way. So anyway, as she said, we hear you. It's just not a simple, it's not going to be a one and done fix. But that is one of the top issues that is being discussed that we'd like to address, says council.
Thank you. Representative Tom Odette has allocated some funding, and that's why the recommendations is not just sidewalks. Could be signage, it could be painting a crosswalk. It could be lights under the underpass where students are presently walking twice a day. So we're just trying to improve efforts, short-term and long-term.
And I took notes on your comments about the signage. That shouldn't require funding from RFATs. That should require a simple request at the DOT, and I will make sure that comes up at our RFATs meeting at the end of this month.
Thanks, Mayor.
So I will do that. Thank you.
And then there's one more thing, and I'll let you take off to Mr. Wolf's point. Now, I think the more light we shed on it and to everybody that's listening, I think it makes a lot more sense. But to go in, like in our neighborhood, I live in Whiteville Park. If somebody were to say, okay, we're going to put sidewalks down through your neighborhood. I don't have sidewalks. My grass goes right to the curb. So you're going to encroach into other people's yard with a grass buffer and then a however wide sidewalk it may be required there. So you're coming on, you would be coming onto my property or whomever's property in some instances, whether it be in the town or the county, and come onto their land. So, you know, people are reluctant to give up that type of property and, you know, make something come further towards their front door. So that's just, it's complex. It's a lot more evolved than people may realize.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's definitely a lot of effort and discussion that's already been had about that. Or about the overall.
And we'll continue. We will continue to have those discussions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have Chris. Aren't you doing a presentation?
I am.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah. And Steve? Steve with you? Or, okay, all right, I'm going to check both of you off because you're on the agenda. All right. Thank you so much, and thank you all for the patience. We do want to hear what our folks need for us to hear. So we're going to go right into presentation number one here, and review Fort Mill Medical Center, Chris Mitchell. Welcome.
Yeah, it's great seeing everybody, Mayor Savage. Thanks for having me. I appreciate it. You know, you were talking about the groundbreaking on exit 85. It feels like we just cut the ribbon and we were both on the podium at the hospital.
So true.
I appreciate having the opportunity to come back here and tell you a little bit about what's happened since we've opened. I like, I'm a communicator, so I like to close the loop on things. And so it wasn't just about building the facility. It was about opening it, operating it, and taking care of people. So with that being said, I wanted to start with a little bit of an agenda. We're going to cover Fort Mill. We can't forget Gold Hill, because that's obviously been a shining star too for the community, although not a hospital. It's an emergency room that I think a lot of people have used, and it's been good for the community. We'll talk about Rock Hill and just some of the higher acuity services there, and then what we're trying to do in the community at large, and just, you know, some recognition we've earned. So Teresa could not be here tonight. We had to sort of divide and conquer, just so you know. We have med exec tonight, which is our biggest medical staff meeting. And then, obviously, this was critically important to us, because again, we want you all and the community to understand what we're focused on at the hospital. Hopefully, of course, in the best interest of the community. And so she is new to the community. She's a Lenore native, so this is the closest she's been to her home in her whole entire career. I'm not going to tell you when she started with Tenet, because she'd get mad at me. But she's been working with Tenet for a long time and has a great record with Tenet. And we're so excited to have her. And for what it's worth, she did purchase a home in Fort Mill and is living in Fort Mill with her husband and his two dogs, and they're really excited to be here. I did bring along with me Steve Wright, who's the chief strategy officer for the market. He too is new to the market, although he spent time in Charlotte with one of our sister systems in Charlotte. And he's excited to be here as well. We're excited to have him. And then just for what it's worth, I've lived in Fort Mill since 2019. I have a daughter that goes to Kingstown. I've had twins since we moved here during the pandemic. And then excitingly, about two weeks ago, we birthed our fourth child, actually in Fort Mill.
Oh, my goodness. Congratulations.
So if I say anything crazy, it's because I haven't slept in two weeks. But I think in simple terms, what we're trying to do at Fort Mill, or what I try to do and Steve tries to do every day, is build a hospital that we would go to ourselves, which is evidence of what I just said. We went there. My wife trusted it. Obviously, we had a great outcome, great experience. And now we're a family of six, which is a little crazy, but we're doing it. So with that being said, this was ribbon cutting day, Mayor Savage, if you remember. And so we had some ambulances out front. So just to recap, it's a 100-bed facility. It's 200,000 square feet. I joke a little bit, obviously, everybody in this room probably knows better than I. It's been talked about for a while. I was in high school, I think, when it was started, when it was starting being discussed. But with that being said, we built it, and it includes a full range of community services, which we'll get into. In our first full year, you know, we started with zero patients. Hospitals, usually when you run them, don't have zero patients in it. And so what did we do in the first full year? Well, we admitted close to 3,600 people, 3,500 admissions. Those are 3,500 people that could stay in their community and get care closer to home so their family members could visit them. Towards the tail end, we were angling closer to about 400 admissions a month. So obviously, like everything, the trajectory is upward. And that first month was clearly much lower. We did over 2,000 surgeries, and we'll talk about some of that as well in terms of what services we're offering. I do want to just highlight a couple of the milestones. In April, so we opened in September, in April, we had already hit 1,000 surgeries. In April, we hosted our friends from the Fort Mill School District. I just hosted some students last week, and we showed them our brand-new robot. So again, I just want to reiterate, you know, this is a community hospital, and so we're trying to make it that way, have the community inside the hospital, not just for care, but for education, for learning, and other things. Additionally, we had twins there. So I'm a father of twins. I'm biased. It's both awesome and something, a journey. But that just speaks to the ability of delivering twins. It's obviously harder than delivering a singleton. And so the team really has increased its competency over time. Two comments. We opened what's called PCU in MedSurg Side B. So we knew this hospital was going to be busy. We didn't open all the beds at the beginning. We've opened two additional units since we started. The entire staff at this facility is employed by the hospital. There is not a single contract labor nurse in that building. So I know everybody's become very familiar with contract labor through COVID and 60 Minutes and ABC News. But again, I think if there's anything that can speak to the culture we've built here, it's that we've been able to recruit and retain people, that we don't need to bring people in at crazy rates to do something in a place that they don't care about. So I think I'd want to just emphasize that point. And then I'll mention just GI, because I'm not going to talk about it later. We've added services, again, so that when people came into the ED, if they needed subspecialty care, they didn't have to leave Fort Mill. The doctor came to them rather than them going to a different facility. And so we're going to continue to do that, and I'll get into that. So what's in the building? These are really the high points that I wanted to hit. Orthopedics, neurosciences, surgery, heart, vascular, women's, and outpatient services. And so a couple of key points. We've added two robots since we opened the facility. So on September 7th, we had zero robots. Now we got two. Robots don't do the surgery by themselves, so we don't have to get anxious about that. And they don't let me do the surgery. So you guys are, everybody's so good. But in both instances, it really does allow the surgeon to have better accuracy. And so the first robot we got was what's called the DaVinci Robot. It's about a $2.5 million robot. It's used for general surgery, bariatrics, colorectal urology, and gynecology. And again, it allows the surgeon to get into places in the body minimally invasively, faster recovery, lower pain medications post-op. People go home, do what they want to do, go back to the grandkids, go back to their spouse, have fun, pickleball, golf, et cetera. The more recent one we got is called the Mako, and that's for total joints, so hip and knees. Obviously, that's a huge need as people age in place. And again, it allows for accuracy minimally invasive. And so we have people going home from total joint surgery right now the same day. I mean, years ago, it was a week, and it got down to a couple of days. They discharge from the PACU, which is just absolutely incredible. I won't give it enough credit in terms of the science with respect to taking the CT. They put the CT in the model. They place 82 points on the knee, and they shave only what they need off the knee. So again, just incredible technology here. And so that's really what I want to reiterate. It's here, and you have a whole team that wants to take care of you. So again, we've added since September 7th vascular surgery. We didn't have it on day one. Bariatric surgery, we didn't have it on day one. We started doing what's called the Inspire Procedure. If you're familiar with that, you may see it on TV. That's a procedure where people who are struggling with CPAP can get rid of the CPAP machine, have a device inserted. And so our mantra at Piedmont Medical Center Fort Mills, we're saving one marriage at a time. We're going to continue to do that. And Dr. Jones with Charlotte, your eyes, nose, and throat, again, Fort Mill resident, office in Fort Mill is doing that procedure as well. So I'll move on to Gold Hill, just really briefly. Saw almost 18,000 people in 2023. Again, we call it our shining star. It's typically routinely one of the most efficient freestanding EDs in the company. And so we have this model around the US. And in terms of door-to-doc time, that's really a measure about efficiency. This routinely is in the top two. And so we're very focused on operational throughput. When people go to these, clearly, when I go to these with my kids, you want to be in and out. Right? You already don't feel good. You know that it probably doesn't warrant hospital admission. If it does, of course, we'll get you to a hospital. But typically, it doesn't. And when it doesn't, you want to get treated and go home. That's what we're trying to do at Gold Hill. So with that being said, I'll run through Rock Hill quick, because there are some key points here. There's some stats. I'll let you read those on your own. But just wanted to highlight, Rock Hill continues to provide Level 3 trauma care. We'll have our re-accreditation study this month. That's through the American College of Surgeons. And in addition to that, continues to provide cardiovascular surgery, women's, and a Level 3 NICU. I know I want to give everybody time for questions if you have questions. So this is our trauma data, which again, just shows the importance of having a trauma center in New York County. 2022 is on the left, 2023 is on the right. And so what's really interesting here is you can see that the number of trauma cases has gone up year over year. We'd expect that. The population's grown. But the blue part is the interesting part. So that's transfers out. That's where someone needed a higher level of care. And that stayed pretty flat. So what does that mean? We've been able to keep more people here locally because we've enhanced the subspecialty coverage that we have. And so again, we're trying to keep people in their community, because it's very hard for family members, obviously, to support their loved ones when they're miles away. Right? So Rock Hill, again, similar in nature, but I want to highlight heart and vascular, so cardiac surgery, structural heart. When I got here in 2019, effectively, Rock Hill really didn't have a robust structural heart program. And what does that mean? You may have heard of TAVR, which is a transaortic valve replacement. Effectively, it's valve surgery without the surgery. So it's a catheter-placed device, very, obviously, high technology. And so we've started doing that last year in Rock Hill. And then more recently, Watchment, which is typically done by an electrophysiologist, Dr. Brainio, who works here, both in Fort Mill and Rock Hill, with Carolina Cardiology Associates, is doing this procedure. And it treats AFib, advanced high acuity procedures that we've added since then. So this is my favorite slide, because I'm a resident and I get to do all this fun stuff. But I just wanted to highlight that, again, I live here. Steve works here every day. We want to be a part of the community, and so we're excited about what we're able to do with the town and the farmer's market this year. I'm on the board of the Fort Mill Economic Partners. I get to join Chris every Fridays, and so we've enjoyed that. I'm on the Strawberry Sprint and Stroll Subcommittee, which is an elite group of four individuals that is trying to do a 5K. We're excited about, we're excited to participate in Strawberry Fest as always. We just sponsored the Girls on the Run 20th anniversary. We will be the sponsor of the concert series at the Greenway this summer again. And again, very excited about our partnership with the Greenway. And then always, Dr. Eppson, the Fort Mill School District, who does a great job. So I'll just close out with some of our distinctions. I think really, again, this is just scratching the surface. Steve and I have a lot on our list to add to this. We're going to continue to do Centers of Excellence. Fort Mill will be a bariatric center of excellence in the near future, and we'll add to this. So here's our social handles. We'll continue to try to put good content out there, take care of the community. I'll stop. I said a lot, and I'd love to answer any questions anybody may have. I know there's a lot here, but I just appreciate you all giving us the time to talk and tell you how we've done in the first year.
We're very happy to hear this, because we were all excited, and we waited like everyone else to finally get a hospital. And this is an incredible amount of growth and just depth in the timeframe that you've been open. So I'm very impressed.
Thank you. Well, we'll continue to focus on making it a community hospital that the community wants to use. And again, I just, when we go in every day, we think about, our family's going to use it, so it's got to be good. Right? And so hopefully, your families feel the same way. feel the same way. I'm willing to answer, you know, any questions or host anybody who wants to see the facility. Again, hopefully, you don't have to use it. And you can just come over for lunch. But again, we appreciate your support, Mayor Savage, and the council as well.
Well, and I did have a family member use it about a month ago, and it was a great experience for what we were going through at the time. So it's very clean, very pleasant people there. I mean, it's brand new. So it's a great place to be. So thank you. It was nice to have it right down the road, for sure.
We're going to try to keep it clean.
I was one of the seventeen-thousand-eight-hundred-sixteen visits to the Gold Hill last year with a broken leg, and then had surgery in Rock Hill. And I mean, from start to finish, the entire process was fantastic. Everybody was just amazing to work with. I don't want to go back again, but.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Yeah. We hope no one, none of you do. But if you do, obviously, we're there. And I think that's a good point. You know, I talked about the medical staff. All the medical staff, for the most part, is private practice. And so that means they fund their own practices, right? And they make money when they see patients. They all agree their practices to support this. And so they took a little bit of a leap of faith, too. So I do want to give them a thanks and kudos for doing what they did as well.
And when the plans were submitted for that, there was some room out for some outparcels or some doctors' offices and things like that. Anything on the radar for that?
Yeah, it's a good question. The short answer is yes. I think with some evolution of the certificate of need changes, I think that's probably going to maybe accelerate some of that. We do have some capacity still in the medical office building. I think part of what happened, and again, I wasn't here, but just from a strategic perspective, since it took so long to build, a lot of the practices built their own offices. And so the medical office building's been a little bit slower to fill up, even though we've grown the medical staff significantly. But I do think for sure, yeah, the site, I think, is forty-one acres. And there's definitely plans. It can support three MOBs, Amortory Surgery Center. I think you'll see all that definitely in everybody's lifetime here, for sure. Yeah.
Fantastic. Yeah, I think with Mr., we were both on planning at the time, and it was designed, actually, because it took so long, the needs have kind of outgrown the size. So it was designed, I think, where they could expand to another hundred beds or whatever it was. And they said, oh, yeah, this would be in this area here. But I do want to commend you on, you did exactly what we asked people, get involved, get some skin in the game. And that's what we want. We don't just, you know, we love our business partners, but we love people that are part of our community and have the same passion to get engaged, get involved in civic organizations, get some skin in the game. And that's what it's all about. And I think that's what makes it, you keep mentioning community hospital. That's what makes it a community hospital and not just the hospital, you know. A lot of us grew up in the day where the doctors, we knew all the doctors by first-name basis because we went to school with our kids or saw them at the Pampers Joint or whatever. That's what makes it a community, not just anywhere USA. So thank you so much for, you know, your time and your staff's time in getting involved in other things. So I think that's what makes a difference.
Yeah. No, I appreciate it. Our staff's super excited to, you know, do things like the farmer's market and table and tell people what they're doing, because we always joke, you know, no one's thinking of healthcare on a Tuesday. They think of healthcare when they need it, right? So Chris, to your point, we've really got to be out there and educating people on what's inside the building. They drive by, they think it's pretty, and we appreciate that. It is pretty. But we want to be proactive and be involved and say, we're there for you at any time, right? And so I appreciate those comments, though. This has been a great community for me and my family.
I know you mentioned you're working with the school district, but I'd like to reiterate there are some programs that are kind of next level at the high schools. I know my son's taking Biomed III right now at the high school, so it's dual-credit for college. They're often looking for internships or job shadowing. Just be sure you're reaching out to that generation, because that'll be the next group that comes in. So just wanted to make you aware of it. With twins babies, you probably aren't aware what the high school's doing yet, but there are some opportunities there to really get those kids involved to see if this is a career they want to go into.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think, you know, part of the reason why I want to be out in these community engagements is I don't know what I don't know, right? And so I think however we can help people advance, whether it's clinically or just in their own personal life, we're willing to do that. And I'm more than willing to engage with any group. And so if there's a group that you all want to point me in that direction, whether it's me talking to them or me, you know, partnering with them, happy to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you. We're so grateful and very happy to have you.
Awesome. Thank you again for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, that was good. All right. Presentation number two, presentation for Family Fun Day, Chikana Hester.
Hello.
Hey, Chikana.
First of all, I just wanted to share some awards with y'all. Dean and I just, we went to some conferences recently, and we went to the North Carolina Festival and Events Association Conference, and we won for the Strawberry Festival Event Website. We won the best event website.
There you go.
And then also at that conference, we won the best brochure for the Strawberry Festival for a large event.
All right.
And then for the Southeastern Festival and Events Association, which is all across the southeast, we won the best event series for the Town of Fort Mill's one-hundred-and-fiftieth Celebration.
Wow.
And then for the Strawberry Festival, we won the best event photograph for that. And then also for the Strawberry Festival, for that conference, we won the best event program for our brochure again for that. So we're very excited to bring those awards home.
Mayor, I think we need to, as we're starting to design the new town hall, we have a much bigger bore of walls in the events group, because I have a feeling there'll be many more coming.
Who needs the Oscars in the carpet? We've got our own red carpet here.
Congratulations. A lot of effort goes into that. It's pretty quick to show us the brochure, but we know the competition that you're up against, and the short staff that we have to do this. So we're very proud of you, and I hope you always know how just excited we are to have the level and quality of events that we do have.
Well, thank you all. We appreciate all your support for everything. All righty. So I am here to present our Family Fun Day. This is our first big event of the year at Walter Elijah Park. It's going to be on Saturday, March twenty-third, from eleven AM to two PM. We're going to have amphitheater stage entertainment all throughout the day. We'll have food trucks, kid-related vendors, face painters and balloon artists. DJ Brown Sound will be doing their music and bubbles, and then we'll have all of our yard games out there. And this is an all-ages event. It will feature science experiments from WOW Factor Science Show, which is a blend of magic and bubbles, and then from Spears Bubble Show. WOW Factor Science Show and Spears Bubble Show, they will take the stage at rotating times from eleven AM to two PM, and each show will feature fun, excitement, and audience participation. Spears Bubble Show was actually featured on America's Got Talent, and it's a blend of comedy and a mysterious fusion of art, science, and magic. And then the crowd will also enjoy being a part of the WOW Science Factor Show with its fun and interactive experiments. And this show will show young and old alike how cool science can be. And then in between those shows, we have Rick Hubbard Entertainment, and he does music and comedy. We saw him at some of our conferences perform, and he just gets everybody involved with just fun kazoo's and blow-up guitars and just all kinds of stuff. And adults have fun with that, too. And then, of course, we'll have all of our cornhole out there, Giant Jenga, Connect Four, all of our fun yard games. And we have a big selection of food trucks that day. We have Fifth Sin, Seche's Five-Eighteen, Jamrock Jerk Spot, Salute You, Vida de Pizza, KO Food Truck, King of Fire, That One Truck, Gizmo's Grill, Happy City, Nikki's Designs, Abbott's Frozen Custard, Screamin' Cold Treats, Kona Ice, S&amp;K Funnel Cakes, Pelican Snowballs, Sweet Dog Lemonade, Boba Time Tea, and then Palmetto Pony. And then we have some kid-related vendors out there. We're going to have Flyers After School, Agape Acres, Little Snaps, Up Level Martial Arts, Golden Gray Sensory Play, Lauren Kirby, children's author, Toys and Such, and Kawaii Colors Shop, along with DJ Brown Sound, and then our balloon artists and face painters. And this is just a sight map of the event. Most everything will be on the amphitheater side, but we'll have all of our main food vendors a little bit to the left, to the right of the park. And we'll have load-in from nine AM to ten AM, and load-out will be around two-thirty PM. Parking for the event is at Veterans Park, one oh-six North White Street, Calhoun Street Park, two oh-three Calhoun Street, Looms Way, and then our handicap parking is behind the amphitheater. And we will close Argy Street for this event from nine-thirty AM to two-thirty PM. And then, of course, what to bring. Please bring chairs or blankets to watch all the shows. No coolers, no outside food. We have tons of food. And then no outside drinks or alcohol, no golf carts. All the golf carts must park in designated parking areas, no bicycles, no pets, only service animals, no smoking or vaping, no profanity, and no firearms or weapons. And then for all the details are found at fortmillsc.gov, and follow Town of Fort Mill on social media for all the details of all of our events.
All righty. Any questions for Chikana?
Chikana, have we found that putting the food trucks to the right side is a better flow, because that's further away from playground and noise and stuff? How's the...
It just depends on the event. Our fire marshals work with us to try to, like, if they're loud or whatever, to place those a little bit farther away from the stage, that type of thing. But it just really depends on the event and how big the event is, whether we move them to the other side of the park. Because some of our events, when it's just a concert, we'll still put them down the sides in front of the amphitheater.
Rain or shine?
Rain or shine.
I think this is a good place, too. I was, I saw something on social media, not, I guess it was late last week, that I was asked to respond to about our signage on the stage at the amphitheater. And it says that you're not to be on the stage unless you've rented the facility. And there was a question asked in regards to how could that be fair, given that it was taxpayer money that built the amphitheater. And it's not necessarily about being fair. It's about being safe. That stage does not have a rail on the front end. We did have experiences of kids up there riding bicycles, skateboards, and other things. You could have children fall off the front onto the concrete pad that's in front of it. And we do have people that rent the facility for events. So we also had some vandalism. And we take great pride as a council and a town in what we've been able to provide. I've lived here when we didn't have the amphitheater to enjoy. And I think that would be really questionable if we didn't work to protect it and keep it so that everyone can enjoy it, and that we keep everyone as safe as we possibly can. That's our number-one guideline, is safety. So I'm sorry that it doesn't feel that it's open, you know, for everyone to go play on, but it is something that we want to preserve for the good of the whole. It is for the good of the town, and we do want to preserve it and take care of it and ensure that no one gets hurt. So I just thought that was a good place to address it, given that we're getting ready to have our first event out there.
Yeah.
And we do have new playground equipment there now, too, right? So playground's ready to roll for everybody.
Oh, it was.
It's packed. It's packed all the time, all the time. All right. Chikana, thank you so much. We appreciate you. And congratulations. Let's give them another round of applause. Way to go, team. All right. Now we're going to move into Old Business. Old Business Item Number One, Second Reading, An Ordinance to Amend the Town of Fort Mill 2040 Comprehensive Plan is amended on September thirteenth, 2021, so as to incorporate the Town of Fort Mill Trail Master Plan as an addendum to the land use element contained within the plan. Penelope, if you'd like to join us.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Have no changes for second reading. Just, again, thank you for supporting the Trail Master Plan and for us to adopt it with the comprehensive plan.
It's one of the most, I know we've had a couple of really great weeks, but this trail plan is transformative for our community. So we're all looking forward to seeing the results of this collaborative work.
Thank you.
Any questions for Penelope?
As we've noted tonight, yet again, there's a lot of interest in making the town more pedestrian-friendly, walkability. So I think this is, you know, you have to kind of plan before you can do. And so I think this is what we're trying to do, a strategic plan and goal, how to get it done. So thank you for all your effort. It's very exciting. And because there, again, I like to walk trails and stuff.
Sure. And tomorrow, we, Town of Fort Mill, Lancaster County, York County, Carolina Trail, we're starting on our trail feasibility study along Sugar Creek to see how we can connect trails from across Charlotte Trail. So I'm going to be walking it tomorrow. Looking forward to the beautiful weather and see what we can do with all the regional partnership. Because for a trail master plan, it's so expensive. With actually building trails, we have to work as a team.
And I love that we do, because then we get to take advantage of everyone's expertise and not have to go out and create it on our own. So I'm very excited about the future of the trail system in Fort Mill. All right, I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve Old Business Item Number One.
And I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, thank you. All right. New Business Item Number One, First Reading, An Ordinance to Authorize Staff to Enter Into a Lease Agreement with CE LLC, Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless for the Purpose of Co-Located Equipment Atop the Town's Water Tank Off Dobie Bridge Road. Chris Pettit.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item, staff has been working for a number of years with the group, and I'm just going to say Verizon Wireless, for the purpose of adding equipment on top of the town's tank on Dobie Bridge Road adjacent to Dobie Bridge Park. This lease would be for a period of twenty-five years. The payment for the lease would be a lump-sum payment of three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars upfront, and that number was derived from the cost of an upcoming maintenance item that we have. The town's obligation on the tank is to repaint the tank. And so basically, the purpose or the cost of the lease would go towards the payment of the tank. So it would be at no cost to the town. This is first reading, and so there's a lengthy lease attached to it. Should you have any questions, happy to answer those. But I attached this picture here because you can see at the top of the tank, there are some railings that do have some equipment on top of it already. And essentially, from an aesthetic standpoint, all they would be proposing to do would be to add some equipment onto that. So aesthetically, it really wouldn't be much of a change. Aesthetically, they would be paying for us to enhance the aesthetics of it with a paint job. So but with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have in the state of South Carolina. Any lease or purchase, or lease or sale of property has to be done by ordinance, which is why we're here before you tonight.
And I think for everyone's edification, I think it's fair to say there's no effect on our operation or the safety of the tank itself. It would still perform and function properly for the citizens of our water.
Correct. A structural analysis was completed. A significant due diligence period was completed by Verizon to look at everything from that standpoint. And from the town's standpoint during that period as well, considering any future operations that, you know, could this be a hindrance of, and there was nothing that came up. So it is before you from the staff's perspective of having no objections. It ultimately comes down to a council decision.
Great.
Mayor must recuse from this item.
Okay. And Mr. Moody Virginia, if you will take note of that, Mr. Moody is recusing himself from this particular vote.
And as far as liability for us for their equipment, who does that sit with?
They would have their own insurance to cover that.
Perfect. Just making sure. Okay. No further questions? I need a motion.
Hang on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a whole list of questions. I was just kind of waiting for it to finish up. So twenty-five years is a very long time to committing anything from the town. And I understand the idea was, you know, the one-time painting of the water tower. And what is the term that that paint, how often does it need to be maintenance to redo the paint?
Timeout on that answer. The lease is common. It is not just water towers that get leased. Having worked for a public utility, the leasing is something that is happening all over, so that we don't have the cluttered system that if everybody that needed service wanted to put up their own support for that service, we would not be happy. I think what, and Chris, you can correct me, but I believe what we decided was to use the money for the lease to do that. It wasn't necessarily attached to their leasing it just so we can paint it. I think it's just, that's a good way for us to use the lease money. Is that not correct?
That's correct. It was upcoming as a needed item for this water tank. An initial offer was made that was well less than... An initial offer was made that was well less than the cost of painting the tank, and it was to be paid monthly in an amount that would hardly be noticeable to the town, so something that would be noticeable would be, instead of us having to pay $350,000 next year to paint the tank, that was the thought process going into pay it all upfront to, to help accommodate that, and the town could utilize those funds for, for other purposes. There, there is a provision in there, given the length of time, should Verizon decide to terminate the lease, just say halfway through, that the town would repay half of that $350,000. Again, it's, it's floated upfront to, to pay for the, it's floated upfront for, for any use of the town, but should they decide to, you know, go a different direction in, in 15 or 10 or 15 years, then, then we would be, pay back a prorated portion of that.
Yeah, so that's kind of where I was going, it's not how much it costs to paint the town, but this thing is, is a prorated contract, and in section 12, the Leasee has right at annual anniversary to cancel with a three-month prior notice. It should either be both parties have that right, we don't have the right to cancel it, they do, and then we would have to prorate that, so there could be very little benefit to the town. Also, in section 15, and I'll just run this out and you can, we might want to follow up or not, there's no time limit on how long the leasee can work to restore ongoing interference as long as the lease is in good faith effort to remedy this situation. So if the antennas were put on there and it, say it's interferes with the wifi at Catawba Ridge School or any, or the police, or the fire station, there's no term for them to, like, absolute term has to be resolved by, you know, three to six months, as long as it's a good faith, and that's, that's the same kind of thing as reasonable, which is a, a, a big concern. There's some, some language in here I think should be struck out of section 18 about the death of the leaseor, and I'm not sure, Barry, how much you've looked into this?
I was gonna say, Barry, did you not prepare this or review it?
I didn't prepare, I reviewed.
Okay, thank you.
So it's, it's just a standard agreement, obviously provided by, and I'm not trying to be combative, Mayor, but this is a standard agreement, it was written on behalf of Verizon for their benefit, is which I would have done if I was doing it, but there's some things, and you mentioned safety, Mayor's number one, there appears to be an installation of a 500-gallon propane tank, it's gonna be sitting right at the base of the water tower, so in the world we live in now, it's to run their generator, 500 pounds of propane could be a target, which could possibly do damage to it. I don't know who's reviewed that, but that would be a concern I would have. And that's an exhibit A. So there's several things, this is the first time I've looked at it, I'm sure y'all have gone through it several times, but those are the questions, some of the questions that came out.
They're very good questions, I guess I have a little bit more faith in our legal review and our own engineering review to have gotten that deep, but those are good questions. So, Mr. Pettit, do you have answers for those good questions?
To the questions within the text, you know, given the 20 or so pages, I, I'd have to re-review the 20 pages cohesively to, to provide a cohesive answer to that.
Yeah, and again, I don't know if we want to delay this or not, I'd be glad to submit those, this is, like I said, this is the first time I've looked at it, I'm not sure the, how quickly we need to move, but the propane tank is definitely something, rest of it is legal ramifications, I would want to write it in, into where's in the best behalf of the town as any other thing I would want to do, and it's a standard vendor agreement, but there are definitely things in there that I think could be problematic, not necessarily they will be, but they could be.
Are they regulated? Just, is Verizon regulated? Selco, are they regulated?
By, by?
Any state agency?
They, they are regulated from, from some aspects, I don't know if they're regulated from an environmental aspect, if that's what you're thinking.
The propane, propane tank, I feel certain is a part of everywhere they have operations, I don't feel like it's a unique situation.
It, it's, it's not, not untypical to have those types of things at, at cell towers and things of that nature, you know, where they do have generators and stuff, so this is not, something that's not typical.
Right.
That's pretty industry standard.
It is, and to, to Chris's, to Councilman Wolf, excuse me, I'll be formal, to Councilman Wolf's question, it is a water tank, you know, that we depend on in times of water interruption, which we have had over the last several years, however, I would like to think that we do look through what is proposed to us before it comes before council.
This, this has been reviewed by staff, yes.
Thank you.
Including utilities.
Okay.
Including but not limited to.
Got it.
So all the, the reason, reasonable discretion and reasonably acceptable, feel good with that, Barry, just seems like it involves somebody's judgment at that time, so, got you to look at it, so.
So this is the point, that unless there are other questions, we can, you're certainly at liberty to offer a motion to delay if you prefer.
Well, those are just my questions, I don't know if others have questions or not, I just, it's, my, my point in the beginning, 25 years is a long time to commit the town to anything, and in 25 years, a lot of things can change, and I just want to make sure that we have dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's to where, if anything hap, because like I said, the one that they can break the lease with 90-day notice at renewal, we can't, and then, so that's money that we would have to, you know, it's, it's not necessarily this one pot of money that's there, so it's just several things that I have concerns over.
Okay, are we on a timeframe to respond, Chris? Pettit?
Mayor, I, I don't believe there's any strict timeframe, certainly, this is first reading, there's two readings of it, I can come back with additional answers if, if we want to move forward with first reading, understanding we have questions or defer either way.
Mr. Wolf, how would you like to proceed?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure if anybody else has concerns or not, that's just, I, I think if there's no rush, I think defer and give us time to, he has some follow-up questions to this, it just wasn't time, it's kind of a, I'll, I'll submit those to Mr. Pettit, and then he can review and, and then follow up.
If you'd make that motion, that would be great.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah.
I wasn't comfortable with the 25 years, I mean, basically it's a one-way street, they could, they could pull out at any time, so, and then we owe them money back, I mean, to me, either you're in or you're out, but, you know, that, if they want to commit to us, we're providing something for them to be able to utilize, so they, they obviously would not be doing that if they didn't really need that or want that to do, so if they get a better deal, if somebody built a tower or something, oh, okay, we're gonna move our equipment to here, then now we're repaying money that we're, we basically counted on to do this project, so to me, if you're in it, you pay the money, and that's the deal.
And, and, and I'll, I'll make this statement, by no means are we counting on this money, do we need this money?
Right.
We were gonna do it either way.
It's income that's nice to have, sure, any income's nice to have, and, and we would be, we would plan to be prepared to pay it back if we had to during the terms of the, the lease, we wouldn't ever not be prepared to do so. The way it was structured initially was, again, a monthly payment in small increments, and given that this was coming up in the town's capital planning, we thought that increasing the, the total over the 25-year period to an amount that meant something to us, being a project, and being able to pay for a project, made sense, and, and understanding that there may still be, you know, a payback at, at some point.
Going back to Mayor, Mayor Savage's point is, they, they have the need, obviously, so whether we do it on a passive piece of property like this, or they're gonna build their own tower, and we don't have near the control over the aesthetics and everything else, so it, it seems like it makes sense to me, so.
Lisa, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, what's the life expectancy of this tower?
I wondered the same thing.
Oh.
Because this has been up a while.
Yeah, I mean, way, way longer than another paint job, it'll have several more paint jobs and a couple, a couple of cell leases before.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I had the same question.
And in general, I'm not opposed to put, I mean, it makes sense to do it, I just want to make sure that we don't get ourselves into something that we're, wish we had done spent due diligence.
And as you can see, we, we have some equipment atop this, so they're not taking all the structural capacity to, to put equipment up there, there's, there's already some spoken for, so, again, what, what, what is up there can remain, what is up there can be replaced, they're basically just giving an, getting allowance for some structural capacity atop the tower to add their equipment.
Does, does their lease preclude anybody else from using the top of it as well?
No, he said we have other uses.
Okay, okay, so, again, I say the more we can put on existing structures, as opposed to freestanding towers, I think the better, but.
Well, in section eight, actually, if some, there actually is some wording that says, "All improvements, equipment, and tenants shall be, be at the discretion or option of Leasee, not leaseor." So it needs to be limited to stuff that they've installed.
Right.
So those, those are the kinds of.
So it sounds like we have some cleanup to do with the contract.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm not saying there's bad people or whatever, I just, I've.
They're looking out for them.
I've been through these things, and just want to make sure it's in our best behalf, and it's nothing vague or non-convailing.
Absolutely.
So I will get with Mr. Pettit and things I've found, and I'm sure Barry will probably just take a quick look at it and see some things that, this is a standard agreement.
So I'll, I'll make the motion to defer new business item number one to our next meeting.
Thank you.
Pending more information.
March 25th?
To the March 25th meeting? Defer to the March 25th meeting? This business item?
Two weeks from today.
That's the motion that has been made.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to think in my head, uh.
I understand.
Yeah.
Does that give sufficient time, or should we move it to the next, the first of the month?
That gives sufficient time for me, um.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to, in a second, okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you, thank you, good discussion. All right, new business item number two, consideration of a request to extend utility services beyond the town limits to serve York County Tax Map Number 713000216, and again, our subject matter expert is Mr. Pettit.
Hey, Mayor, on the screen here, you can see a parcel highlighted, this is a parcel that is not within the town limits, the parcel's adjacent to it, also not in the town limits, but are served by the town's water and sewer utilities, the parcel, the property owner is requesting the ability to connect in to our water and sewer service, given state law requires council action or council authority to do so, the request is before you, it's not eligible for annexation, or typically that's the route we would take, but, given that it's not, we are requested, the applicant is requesting ability to connect a contingent upon signing an annexation covenant that would say that they agree to, they and future owners agree to annex should it ever be requested of them if they become contiguous.
I think it's important to also note in this request that they would pay the outside rate, and they would pay for any connection fees as anyone else that would request this of the town would do.
That is correct, and, and the, the purpose of this versus, you know, going well and septic, it, it is a small property, so well and septic is not an option for them.
So I was surprised, I knew there's water out there, I didn't know sewer went all the way out to that.
Yeah, it goes all the way out down to Rich Street.
Well, that is Rich Street, so the green, the little square, green square is the, the lot we're talking about, I assume. So would they just pay a tap fee in addition to the, the running to the main pipe, is that the way this would work?
They would pay capacity fees to connect in, and then they would pay whatever it costs to, to tap into the, or their service line to the main.
I mean, there's a standard tap fee, I assume, plus the running that to it, so, and then they would just pay the fees.
The tap fees are standard, what it costs to get it to the home is, is whatever it costs to get it to the home and connect it to the home.
So it'd be no cost to the, I guess what I'm asking, it'd be no cost to the town?
Correct.
And then there would just be a user, like everybody else around there?
Correct.
Except they pay the outside rate.
Well, everybody else around there pays outside.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Further questions? Hearing none, I need a motion on new business item number two.
Make a motion to, to approve new business item number two?
I have a motion.
A second.
And a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. New business item number three, first reading, ordinance amending budget for the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning October the 1st, 2023, and ending September the 30th, 2024. Our CFO, Eric Davis, is our subject matter expert.
Thank you, Mayor, the next four items, I'm gonna be talking to you, or at least for most of it, you've already talked about the, the items that we're gonna be talking about here, which is the acquisition of a couple of pieces of property in town, so these items before you really are just some of the legal work that has to be done to make those transactions a reality. So, budget amendment 24 dash 01 is for a total of $2,250,000 for the purpose of acquiring real property located on Tom Hall Street, which is formerly the Hardee's property, for the purpose of creating a municipal parking lot, so we're gonna fund this with two different ways. We're going to, this budget amendment increases the revenue and expenditures of $1,368,500 in municipal facilities impact fees, and then the balance will be, will come from hospitality tax revenue, so we'll be increasing revenues and expenditures in the amount of $881,500. So that funds the total acquisition cost of $1,875,000, and it gives us a balance of just a little over $367,000 to make improvements, such as raising the property, improving the lighting, resurfacing, et cetera. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Davis, can you repeat that very last sentence you said? This will cover?
So we'll have about $367,000 available to make property improvements, which would be.
Okay, so this covers the purchase price and all the improvements, removing the building and?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought you said, I just want to make sure.
Yes.
I will say that's been a very positive purchase from both the store owners downtown and the normal community, so I want to thank everybody for making that happen, and I think that was, that's, that's real money, but it's real beneficial to the downtown district, so, and I like the way we're, the impact fees are using that, and hospitality tax is a great use of those funds. So I'd make a motion to approve new business item, I guess I should keep up what item on?
Number three.
Number three. Say again.
All right, I have a motion and a second, does anybody have any further comment before we vote? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving new business item number three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. New business item number four, an official intent to reimburse expenditures for certain capital expenditures with the proceeds of a not-to-exceed-29-million-installment-purchase-revenue-bonds. Again, this is Eric Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. So agenda item number four is a reimbursement resolution for certain capital expenditures in an amount not to exceed $29 million. This reimbursement resolution pertains to the acquisition of real property at 123 North White Street and 205 North White Street. The purpose of this resolution is to state publicly that the town plans to reimburse itself with bond proceeds for expenses incurred prior to the acquisition of the property and issuance of bonds. Resolution covers a time period, period that extends to 60 days prior to the adoption of this resolution and the execution of the bond issuance, which is currently expected to be on or around May 30th of 2024. To date, the town has spent approximately $1.2 million in earnest money securing the property, so the resolution is included in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does everyone understand who the request is, so that we can formalize the process to make the purchase with which we're under contract for?
Right.
Good. Okay, this is new business item number four, and it stands without a motion.
I make a motion to approve new business item number four.
So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you so much. New business item number five, first reading, an ordinance amending budget for the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning October the 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024. Eric, you're the man with the plan.
Thank you, Mayor. So budget amendment 24 dash 02 enables the acquisition of real property in the Town of Fort Mill. Budget amendment 24 dash 02 is for an amount not to exceed $29 million for the purpose of acquiring real property located at 123 North White Street and 205 North White Street. Budget amendment. Budget amendment increases the bond proceeds revenue of twenty-nine million dollars while also increasing the general fund, non-departmental, other outlay expenses by twenty-nine million dollars. Uh, the budget amendment, uh, is included in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Did you just read for us from item number six?
Number five.
No, number five?
Number five.
It just has similar language in number six, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just making sure I didn't jump around.
No, ma'am.
All right, are there any questions for Eric on the first reading of new business item number five? Again, the formalization of our ability to finance and make the purchase that we've committed to.
Make a motion to approve new business item number five?
Okay, I have a question.
Okay.
Yes.
So, just the formalities, so you're modifying this year's, amending this year's budget, reflecting this twenty-nine million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Both in revenue and, and outlay.
Yes, sir.
So, how does this carry, so, the bonds won't be issued, so that's through September, right?
No, so what'll happen is, is there'll be one transaction, uh, currently scheduled for around May thirtieth, uh, so, issuing of the bonds will give us twenty-nine million dollars, uh, in, in revenue, and then we're going to pay that twenty-nine million, uh, either in property acquisition or property improvements.
Okay, so that all will hit in this year's budget, that's why you're, okay.
Yes, sir.
So, I know the expenditures would be, but that's paying back the bonds.
Correct.
Over whatever period, I think you had twenty years.
Right now, twenty years, yes, sir.
I saw that, yeah, okay, I just want some clarification.
And we'll, we'll budget the, the debt service payments hereafter, every year for twenty years.
Yeah, you're showing both the debt and the revenue in this year's budget, and that's what, I was trying to get some clarification, okay, sorry, just wanted some clarification.
That's okay, so we have already had a motion, and we've already had a second, all those in favor?
We don't have a second.
We do not have a second, I thought you did, well, there you go. So, Mr. Helms did second it, I thought I heard him say second. All right, so I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, now we're going to move down to new business item number six, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of Fort Mill Public Facilities Corporation installment purchase revenue bonds. Town of Fort Mill Project Series Twenty-Twenty-Four A, Series Twenty-Twenty-Four B, in the aggregate principal amount of not exceeding twenty-nine million dollars for the purchase and improvement of certain real property, authorizing the lease of a portion of such real property to Fort Mill Public Facilities Corporation, authorizing the execution and delivery of certain instruments related, or relating, to the issuance and sale of the aforementioned bonds, including a base lease agreement and a municipal facilities purchase and occupancy agreement, each between the town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, and Fort Mill Public Facilities Corporation, a bond purchase agreement among the town, Fort Mill Public Facilities Corporation, and the underwriter, and a preliminary official statement, and an official statement related to the Series Twenty-Twenty-Four A bonds, and Series Twenty-Twenty-Four B bonds, and other matters relating thereto. And I see, Eric, that we're going to allow Mr. Theo to, to devote, to give us an explanation of all of that.
Yes, ma'am, I'm going to use a, a baseball analogy here, where, uh, you're going to take the starting pitcher out, and we're going to bring in an expert, uh, to, to close the game.
Cleanup man.
How many innings is this?
A hundred and ten right now. Theo Devos, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor Savage, and members of council, great to be back. This is a short lease, and before second reading, there are a number of documents to which this lease refers, and they'll be provided to council for review before second reading. Their information now will tell you that all the documents mentioned in here have been, uh, gone through second draft, we have another, uh, meeting with all the people on the finance team next Thursday, that'll be our first look at the securities disclosure document as well. And, uh, when we've got all those ready, and can provide those to you for your review in final or near-final form, we'll do that, and have second reading of the ordinance, and we're looking sometime, I think, late, late next month for that. So, the documents that are mentioned in here, and I'll be brief, the town will have money, uh, toward the end of May, and will buy those two parcels of property. I spare a lot of the money that shows up, that twenty-nine million will go. The town will immediately, contemporaneously, lease, uh, the Old Springs office building to a nonprofit corporation, which is in formation as we speak. The nonprofit corporation will in turn lease that back to the town, so it's a lease, leaseback, and the lease allows the corporation to, the town to occupy the property for the term of the bonds. It also provides that each payment that the town makes by way of rent, um, will purchase an undivided interest in the property. So, there, there will be, now, we're planning now for forty payments, two a year, for twenty years. At the end of the fortieth payment, the town will have purchased a hundred percent of the real estate back from the corporation, and the transaction will be over, and you'll own it free and clear. It mentions, uh, a trust agreement, the town won't be part of that, but you have to prove it, trust agreement is between the corporation and U.S. Bank Trust Department. What they will do is act as representatives of the bondholders, and so, uh, when money changes hands over the next twenty years, it'll all go to this trust department, and they will pay the bondholders. It mentions a preliminary official statement, that's the securities disclosure document. It's required by federal securities law, and you'll get a good look at it, it will have a lot of demographic information about the town, it'll have information about town management and financial results over the past five years, and then it will describe for bondholders exactly what's going on here. That will go to a rating agency in New York in May, um, and they will assign a rating to the bonds. The actual issuer of the bonds for the style of transaction is, what's shown in here is Fort Mill Public Facilities Corporation. These have been going on in South Carolina since nineteen-eighty-seven in one way or another, and, uh, so they are the bond issuer, but all the obligations to make payments on the bonds are the town's, let's be clear about that. That corporation will exist, it'll do its thing, and basically sit on the sidelines for the next twenty years. So, uh, our job then, between now and the next time you see me, is to get those documents in near-final form to you for your review, and we will do that. At this stage, however, glad to answer any questions, Mayor Savage.
Any questions?
Absolutely, so, uh, Theo, just curious, uh, two questions, so, they're referring to the, uh, we would call it the R and D building as A and E building, which says the occupied or by Pike Corporation, where does, where does A and E come from, and I don't see that word's even defined? I've just never heard they talk about the Springs, uh, Springs par, parcel is the presently under leased by Global, Springs Global USA, the Springs building.
It's, it's just a definition.
It's not defined anywhere, though, I just don't know.
Architecture and engineering.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Okay.
Maybe perhaps R and D would be better.
And then, uh, the other question I had, in the mechanisms of the lease, the mayor is actually the one who is responsible, I have to go find the verbiage again, but it defines the mayor, not the council, not the town manager, or whatever, and I was just curious why that was, that's in, uh...
Standard practice.
It's what?
It's standard practice, I sign a lot of stuff y'all don't sign.
It, it's, it's, it's delegation, none of, of what's in here is something that's happening under the South Carolina Code, so the council is delegating its powers to.
That's what it says, yeah, the council, after we vote on this, the mayor is actually.
You have to have somebody, or you're going to come.
Yeah, I just get it, I just.
Special meetings.
I sign all, all the ordinances and stuff that you guys vote on, so it's just a one-signature deal. Why I get paid the big bucks.
And why you have a boot on your foot.
Yeah, right, and a big hammer.
But, Mayor, this was, uh, you know, a very lengthy title, and there are a lot of items that are all wrapped into one action, but this, the, the execution of this, at the end of the day, uh, when we're in the second reading, that is, that is what allows you to do the deal.
It's no different than when you go to buy a car or a house, you, you've already decided how you're going to pay for it, you've decided the vehicle or the house you want to buy, and then there's this much paper between you and the actual driving away, or the handing over of the keys, so, that's where we are right now.
So, Theo, did I understand that you, uh, we won't know the interest rate until they review it somewhere, is that what I understood?
Yes, sir, Mr. Helms, the way that works, um, well, an underwriting firm, um, I think that's mentioned in here, PNC Corporation.
Eighty-seven percent right now.
This is, most of the time, the town has dealt with sealed bids, but you can't sell this type of transaction on a sealed bid. So, a lot like the twenty, um, nineteen, I think it was, water and sewer bonds.
Yes.
The town did, you had an underwriter, which at the time, I believe, was Wells Fargo, and, uh, when everything's ready to go, and the bonds have been rated, you know, investment grade, A, double A, whatever, this would probably be A-plus, um... The underwriter goes out into the market, uh, to its customer base, and they, based on how things were doing yesterday in the market and final bond sales, will suggest a range of interest rates, and their customer base will react to those and say, eh, you know, you gotta give me a little more. So, they go out a little cheap, right, and then, when they can get them all sold, that's it. And it authorizes, at the end of the day, there's something called a bond purchase agreement, which the corporation and the underwriter, as the buyer and seller of the bonds, will execute, and the town will also sign off on it. But it's really based on what's happening in the market that day. The town has also retained, because you're not going to look to the mayor for this, and you're not going to look to me, uh, First Tryon Corporation, which are financial advisors, they have access to the same information that the underwriter does, and will be able to tell you, yeah, that's a fair rate, based on yesterday and the day before's information.
Okay, they, they will try to get that as lower rate as possible.
Of course.
Yeah, that's how they get the next deal, just by, by doing that.
Any further questions?
Well, uh, just, since you asked, so, the two, you got the, the A bonds and the B bonds, so you're saying the B bonds are tax, taxes taxable series, and it's more for the acquisition payment, so the A bonds are actually the built, the capital expenditure, is that the way I read that?
No, the, the A bonds would be designated tax exempt because it's going to buy a parcel and a building that's going to be used for a governmental purpose.
Okay.
Uh, the B bonds are going to buy the building across the street and that parcel.
Gotcha.
Why? Because your current plans are, and hopes to have a private tenant in that for the next five and a half years.
And that's what brought up the A and E, that's why I was asking.
Those bonds will have a slightly higher interest rate because of that private use.
Gotcha, that makes perfect sense, okay. That's, that's all the questions I'm having for this segment of this question.
There'll be no surprise from this seat. Anybody else with any questions? Hearing none, I need a motion. This is item number six.
I'll second it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. New business item number seven, and thank you, Theo, we appreciate you driving and clarifying everything for us ten times over.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. Uh, new business item number seven, resolution designating Main Street, Tom Hall Street to Academy Street as the site of a public festival on Saturday, March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, from twelve PM to six PM, in which alcoholic beverages may be sold, possessed, and consumed, and to authorize a special event permit for live music and sound amplifying equipment. Welcome back, Jocana.
Yes, we are, we would like to, um, ask for you to do a resol, a resolution stating those, um, items for the Main Street Jam that is happening on Saturday, March sixteenth.
Anybody have any questions? This is a standard request for resolution that we intend to approve prior to public events that we structure and is necessary by law, so.
And I think this is the right way to end this council meeting after.
Alcoholic beverages?
No. I'm not going there, but I'm just saying, this is a festival after the week, the week we've had, and our mayor has the big gavel out, so, Jocana is our award-winning events team, I think this is a good way to wrap it up, so.
Now, Jocana, will the, the street be blocked off Friday night, or would it be Saturday morning before they block off Main Street?
Um, Saturday morning, yeah, from nine-thirty AM approximately till seven PM.
And I'd like to ask of staff, um, i-if we can try to have these brought to us in a more timely manner, rather than less than a week before, just in case something goes wrong and we can't get to it, it's already been advertised, um, so, Mr. Pettit, we've talked before, can we review the ordinance just to have it to where it's a standard process rather than coming to us on a regular basis?
Yes, yes, uh, and that's underway as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the town responsible for the cleanup, or is it the?
Yes, yeah, um, we, we will be providing the cleanup.
So, this is a town-sponsored event?
Right.
Yeah. Um, I need a motion for new business, and I have a motion for Mr. Moody to approve.
Uh, approve, yes.
And I have a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. There are no information discussion items, and for once, we have no executive session items, so, um, Mr. Wolf, since you haven't had any time on the agenda tonight, we'll start with you.
Oh, well. Well, I'll try to make this as brief as possible.
It's not John Cena, but.
I don't know, I didn't watch that, so, no, I've got, so it's been an exciting couple of weeks in Fort Mill, and want to thank the staff and council for all the efforts and dedication making the purchase of the Hardee's property and Springs buildings possible. I've received positive feedback and excitement from the residents as we look forward to complete these purchasing-related projects. To put these purchases in perspective, last month, I had the opportunity to attend the South Carolina Municipal Association meetings in Columbia. Most cities and towns in South Carolina had some representation of attendance, and gave us all a unique opportunity to discuss amongst ourselves the challenges we all are facing. It is quite amazing at the diversity of the sizes of the communities in South Carolina and the ranges of the challenges discussed. Many towns are facing tremendous growth, while other communities are struggling to simply stay afloat. From discussions I had, it seemed apparent that we, Fort Mill, are somewhere unique, and that that our primary focus is to protect and preserve the small-town charm and culture and overall quality of life, and it was amazing to many of our counterparts. Some were focused on growth, any growth, others were struggling to provide even the most basic services to their community. When I asked how Fort Mill managed to be successful, I explained that we too face many challenges, and credited our staff, our employees, our citizens, our civic groups, and the council for all working together to do what's best for our town. Uh, although we don't always agree, we are all rolling in same direction. The past few weeks have emphasized our commitments to the community as we plan for the future, while also paying homage to our past. The recent purchases have a long-term impact, and after hearing stories from some of these communities, I want to take this moment to thank everyone that is dedicated to the continued success of Fort Mill. Thank you, it truly makes a difference.
I don't know if I can follow that up, but I'm going to try. Kind of teary-eyed over here. Let me tell you about Dylan, no, I'm kidding, um, huh, no, it was, uh, it's been pretty, uh, cool last couple of weeks, couldn't have happened without our staff, I mean, we, we couldn't do any of this without you guys, so thank you, Manager Pettit, and Eric, and Virginia, and everybody else that's involved, and, and, uh, as Ron likes to remind me, I'm not from here, but it's been home a long time, and to see the importance and the feedback that I receive from a lot of people in this community that live there, here, their entire lives, that the town, we purchased this property, and it'll be preserved, uh, has, has been pretty good, you know, you, you, in this role, you don't get a lot of attaboys, but with purchasing the Hardee's and, and the Springs, uh, buildings, you know, a lot of, a lot of positive feedback, and, uh, good job, guys, we, it couldn't happen without, without you and, and without everybody up here, so, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
I ain't got a whole lot more to say after all that, but, uh, I appreciate everything that's going on, uh, working in the cotton mill for eight years, uh, and appreciation for Springs and the organization. My wife's family worked in the mill, and one time, they had a death in the family, and they had to shut down a shift because all the family workers had to go to the funeral, so, that's how Springs organization. So that's how Springs organization was, is all family affairs, so, very excited, grew up across the street from the executive building, watching the helicopter land on the building, and so it's very exciting.
Absolutely. Lisa?
Also, I mean, the emotional part of buying that building, um, is just touching. If you were at the press conference, it was hard not to have tears come to your eyes because it means so much, but what is really exciting is about the opportunity to have an open house for the community to be able to come in and see it. Um, myself and I heard a couple other people at that day mention, we've never been inside of it. Um, I had only been inside one time when the History Museum was doing a parade of homes and buildings, and we went into the Colonel's office, but that's all I had seen, I hadn't seen the rest. So I'm excited about that open house when the day comes, so that the rest of the community can come in and celebrate with us. Um, I also wanted to remind everybody about the school bond referendum that is on March 19th, so that's coming up. If you want more information about it, you can go to scvotes.org, or you can go to the school bond group, I'm not sure of their email or, um, website, I'm sorry, but it's out there if you want to know information about what's coming, but we have that right to be able to vote every time it comes up, so I hope you will take advantage of that opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Garrison?
Yes, ma'am. Um, like everybody said, this is, the last couple of weeks have been very historic. Uh, this is not only something that we're celebrating now, but our, our children and our grandchildren, generations to come will, will benefit from the decisions that we've made. Um, we, we, we've had a plan, you know, we've had a facility plan that we've, that we've put together and everything, and we had some things lined up, but what we did was, not only us as council, but staff, Eric, Chris, everybody else who's involved, we seized on opportunities. Um, these were things that were presented, and we, we had the forethought, and we had the, the, the gumption to act on it and to do it for the town, and like I said, it's going to pay off for years to come, so thank you to everybody involved, this is, this is really cool stuff, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, Al, kind of piggyback on what you were saying, a lot of what has been done in the last few weeks has not come just through the discussion here with staff, I mean, we, we sought an outside agency that could give us an unbiased opinion on where there were needs and where there were shortcomings, and kind of looking a little into the crystal ball. So that was something that we've spent, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking about the hours and hours and hours and hours that we've spent talking about it and staff, even when we're done, you guys are meeting with us after hours, all the time that you have to spend is, uh, is genuinely appreciated, so don't ever think it's not. Um, that's, that's something I take a lot to, to heart, it's not just something that, I mean, you skim across the top of, there's a lot of heart that goes into it for everybody that touches it, so that's, um, it's genuinely appreciated. Um, just, just a genuine appreciation for, so, you know, that being said, you know, to let it never be said that it was like, oh, let's go buy a building, I mean, there's been a ton of background prep and you need established for that, so, excited to be a part of that, um, to see, I mean, people are quick to hide behind a keyboard on social media, and this has been a very positive thing that people have raved about, I mean, I stopped literally on Forest Street today, and, uh, family was telling me how great that was, how happy they were to see the work that had been done, and I was real quick to credit, you know, everybody involved with staff and, and with, with council, so it feels good, it feels like you're doing something right, I mean, that we are a ta- as a town, are doing something very impactful for not right now, not being reactive, but for, gosh, from years and years and years to come, so it's exciting.
Thank you. I'll close with, uh, taking part of your comments, Mr. Wolf, and yours, Lisa, this has been an emotional time. You know, we've, we've taken the, the hard approach of dollars and cents and square footage and number of offices and number of employees and who we have and who we don't have and who we need, we've, we've taken into account a multitude of times what options we could have chosen. We could have chosen to build an annex onto the existing town hall. We always talked about that when we bought the building, because it had additional land. We all know there's not a lot of land left in Fort Mill to build upon, so we, we've looked at a number of options. This option speaks to my heart, because not only does it fulfill, and as Mr. Pettit said, checks all our boxes, it also checks the box of what Chris said that I say all the time. Fort Mill's unique, guys, we are still a family of people living in different houses. We always have been. My grandparents together worked 84 years in the mill where the park is sitting, and they were so grateful to have jobs and a home, and work beside of people that they loved just like they were brothers and sisters. Fort Mill still has that. I know we pull at the seams here and there, and we've certainly opened our arms to lots of new people, but the people that generally come here want that. They want to have a sense of community that in Fort Mill, you can say anything you want to, but I think it's unique. I am so grateful that this council was able to make that type of decision, because Ronnie and I have sat on this council for years, and we haven't had the capability nor the will to make decisions on this level previously. So I'm so grateful that we're looking exactly what my dream was, that we would become intentional, that we would be able to once get ahead of the curve a little bit and stop just responding and to do the right thing. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone in this room, thank you, everyone on this council. I wish we could have started earlier and preserved some of the older homes in Fort Mill, but there's no time like the present, and I'm so grateful for your courage to step out and, and discuss and, and grasp and embrace the right decision. So thank you, I think the future of Fort Mill looks very bright indeed. So with that, I'll entertain with my big hammer, a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.